Webster Gulf, the self-storage facility located in the south side of Ridge Road between Shoe Craft Road and Webster County Boulevard. Alas, Webster Ridge Road LLC is being present. Preliminary final plan plan to allow the construction of the self-storage facility consisting of eight one-story and one three-story buildings on a 5.93 acre site. It's located in an M.C. meeting. It has the Mercer District under the code of town Webster. And public notice, and this was published in Webster Herald. And last meeting, we tabled it to the evening, and we didn't close the public hearing. We left it open, so the public hearing still holds. Okay, this is that.
Mary, Matthew from the National Associates. Also here tonight with me is a developer representative, Brian McKinnon, and Jay Ritz from our office. At the last meeting, there was a few final items that I believe we needed to obtain preliminary final approval, which we previously submitted. One being a cut sheet of the fence, the second being a cut sheet of the lights, and the third being the elevations attached to our site plans, which I think we have everything. We also updated the elevations to show the brick, and I also have a brick sample of them that I put up. It's pretty close to what's shown in the color elevation. So with that, I will open up any additional questions, but please do not make any.
Yeah, my first question is this. You just said you're showing a brick, and you said it's pretty much the color that's shown in here.
Yep.
Shown on the face of the building or shown in the example?
So the brick is on the street side of the building. It's a metal building, but the front facade is brick.
It's on the north side.
Correct.
Okay. The color that you have is not the color of the brick that you show over here, okay? So I want to be clear that the brick is going to be a blend of, it looks like red-type brick.
The brick is going to be concord. It's a concord.
Concord blood?
Yep.
Okay. It's not yellow, that's it?
This is it, yep.
Can I see that?
Sure.
If you can get it over here.
You're actually showing it wrapped around too at the...
Yeah, it does.
All that front area is, which is nice.
Yeah. There's also a split base along the foundation as well.
Well, that from the road, that's all anyway.
Right.
I think what we were looking for at it was just the appearance, because three stories high is quite high. From the road to look like something that's presentable, you know?
Sure.
These are by these areas. Don't want to touch those things anymore. Get away from that yourself. If you can just, Derek, I mean, he has been saying to me, Derek, I'm lost with it.
Someone to...
Go ahead, just go through and see where it goes.
Someone to clear up the issue of...
Do you have a copy of what Derek's saying?
The access road easements. Then we have your drawing here from 2015. So when preliminary approval was given for the subdivision in 2015, here, hold on. Listed on here are multiple easements that were intended for the access road, and it says on there, proposed access easement from R1A to proposed lots, R1C and R1B connects the road to the west.
Yep, we went, not to interrupt, but we did go through this initially in one of the first meetings, and we talked about how the easements were never filed. Those particular easements were never filed.
So I guess what I'm wondering, and it kind of leaves us in this situation, in that this drawing, while it was signed off on by all the parties, when we go back and look at our minutes, we never gave final approval. So somehow this thing got filed without a final approval. And the intent was to have not these as proposed easements, but as actual easements. And when we go back to the minutes, from when preliminary approval was given for this project, item 15, it said, "As approvals are subject to drawing number S100, provide site plan C103, sheet three, drawing C101, as modified to show access road." So that was one of the requirements, so preliminary approval on this thing. And so here's the easements, and when these easements were laid out, there was a design that worked for the road to tie this development over to the west of the Ridge Road. And so my question is, you know, why were those easements never filed in 2015?
All I can say is that the planning board chairman and commissioner of public works and the town assessor signed off on the plan. So, I mean, again, this is before my time.
It just...
So I can't really come up with a...
It doesn't separate with it, you know, particularly when you submitted in September 21st, 2020, the concept plan for this development. And that concept plan shows the exact same rights way that these other proposals are.
Right, yeah.
And then it's a little after that they're taken off.
Right, because that's when we determined or found out that they weren't ever actually filed, so...
So it leaves us though in a situation that we never gave final approval for this subdivision. We've gone through the minutes, we had only, I don't think it was ever given, was preliminary the final approval was never given. Why was signed off by, you know, chairman, I couldn't tell you what I was thinking, or thought process was at the time, or even why, you know, commissioner of public works signed off and the town assessor. Why all these parties signed off on the work, so it never concluded to have approval?
Is it possible that the town may not have record of the final approval? I mean, all I can say is it was signed off on the planning board chairman, so...
Well, it leaves us with a situation where we're supposed to have easements, the approval was supposed, it said in there, you have to have the access road and easements on it, and we didn't get easements. So what we have with us now is, here's a development before us, that for whatever reason, the easements were never filed.
Well, they would have then, because the MOU was predicated on the size of the development.
No, they were supposed to be filed. That's the, that was the...
But I'm not, I'm not...
It's showing the access road and the thing. And so I go back and say, oh, well, yeah, whatever. We didn't file easements because it was being triggered by the MOU. The intent on this thing, the way it's written up, when you go back to the analysis, this was supposed to have been filed with easements. And why it was done, I don't know. It really kind of, it comes across as kind of, you know, game system.
Sure.
You put proposed on it, and we're going, all right, this kind of works, okay, it doesn't matter.
Sure.
The reality was that this was promised, it was not delivered. So we have before us a new development that's going on this parcel that was supposed to have been filed with easements as part of the original preliminary approval. And again, we went back through the minutes before and after that meeting, going up to the date of this thing was drawn, and there's nothing in the minutes for final approval out of the view of. So we're stuck in a situation that promises were made, they were clearly not given, they were taken off for whatever reason, and the document was filed without having final approvals on it. Unfortunately, it was signed off by everyone else, and why they didn't understand it, we can't, it wasn't final approval, can't say that right now. You know, so we're in a situation that if we wanted the road to go over, it has been on the books, it's a little discussion for this overall development since 2010. So it's not like something was unknown to be independent. I was surprised we got the road out, though. All of this was supposed to have been in place since 2010, built for our entire development. And here in 2015, when we had this coming, and we had, there was a layout to show the road going in, everybody agreed to it, and it's probably preliminary, saying, okay, the road is good, it came and built profoundly, and did this connection on it. And now we find out that whoever did the ultimate filing on this thing didn't file the easement. And that just sits for a minute. But we're stuck with it. We have to figure out how to make it work. So the question that ultimately comes up with is, you know, is this thing even valid? Yeah, I don't know. You know, if we didn't do file on the thing, we can't file record on it. Is this thing that was filed with the county, is this thing actually valid now? I don't know the answer to that myself. I do know that these were the conditions laid out, and they haven't been met. I can't, this website though, we do have the element that's come in, really the traffic of the original one, and it has its own purpose, so... But I think the ultimate intent was to have this connection go over. You know, not only, the original title was, this is going to be a small shopping plaza, waves of your average, kind of your traffic now, but it's still available, but it's for the people that use this thing, and also the people in these roosters, and if the dentist ever gets in, because we know it's here impossible, and we know that can't turn out of existing driveways right there. And so there is a benefit for having the road, it was something that was always planned on and intended to have, and ours, you know, mistakes were made, you can't have it. So how do we go about fixing that?
I can't speak for what happened and why the plan was signed off, because that was before my time.
This is number three, is the ultimate ownership of this, or you know, this is, this thing has come in as, you know, Webster Ridge Road LLC has requested, you know, so it's coming in as a continued development, but is the owner, the ultimate owner of these all the properties?
No.
Of the original property, all of them sold off.
Correct.
And so when they were sold off, those parcels, even though they were supposed to have easements on it, were never granted, were never put into deeds for those parcels.
I don't, again, I don't, I don't know. I only know this particular project and all the others.
Actually, Brian, this National Associates...
Yeah, but I...
And it shows these easements are on the neighboring projects. I do, as representative of the company, I've done the research, and they can do that.
Yes, I did the research, and the easements were never filed, so...
Did you find out why?
I don't know why.
That's fifteen questions, why weren't they filed? And I think we need to find out some, there's got to be some kind of line. At least that's what people were coming for. I think otherwise, that's my two, that's my third.
Raj, what's your opinion, because you're the representative on this? What, 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 does it make a file? Right?
I don't know the answer to the question, to be quite honest. I'd have to research it, because I'm not even twenty years at the representative board. This is the first time it's ever come up.
If somewhere along the way, from the minutes of 2015, we're not finding a final approval for preliminary, that we don't find out?
Not final.
Is it that there was none, or is it that we just don't have record of this, or it's some old guy's place, is it not filed someplace in storage, or...
I don't know. I have to, I have to research it. I'm gonna have to research it. I don't know the answer to the question, because normally in the normal process, there's a final approval, and all those easements would have been required to have been filed. But here, we got preliminary, and seemingly no minutes to reflect any final approval, yet we have drawings which were signed off upon by town officials, and ultimately, I mean, there's a timestamp on it. So it clearly was filed, how did that occur? How did that happen? I can't answer that. I don't know what the effect is of filing a map which has not been finally approved by the planning board, but preliminarily approved. That would be the question. What legal effect does that have?
We've got the, did we see the preliminary approval? We do have that it was filed with county clerk, but we don't have where it shows that it was, there's a file approval to allow that to happen. So is that because of the subdivision, which we're doing back where we just said we were? Is it somewhere in a file someplace that we have it? That we just don't have it recorded, or what? I don't know. I don't know what the answer is to this stuff.
So traditionally, when town officials sign off on a subdivision map, whether, I can't, you know, debate whether it was final approved or not, all I can say is that when a, for us to file a map with the county, we need these signatures on the plan in order to be able to file it for the county, which is the planning board chairman, the commissioner of public works, and the town assessor. That's pretty standard with every town.
Just from the record, I was chairman, sure.
Correct. But then it goes to the house department for review and signature, and then it finally goes to the county clerk's office for their final filing. So that's the process. Whether or not the project was approved, or the subdivision was approved, the final approval, if there's minutes out there that aren't, that you're, we're not aware of, or the town is not aware of, I don't know. But it's a legitimate map, there's tax account numbers that have been devised for each one of these parcels. So the subdivision is accurate. The fact that the town either cannot find record of or did not finally approve it, I can't argue that.
I see Derek's point, though, you know, as these other parcels were subdivided, it was all subject to having these easements across those pieces, you know, to continue that road through. That's, they were sold without those easements, and those segregated parcels. So I have no idea what... Have we got any thoughts?
Can't go any further, as far as I'm concerned, until you get that straightened out. You know, preliminary, if you got preliminary, you signed off on that map, but you never filed, they never filed the easement, and that was part of the preliminary approval. Things aren't done.
I think we want to keep in mind that the easements are proposed easements for an access road when you hit a threshold, a square footage threshold. So, and my thoughts on why the easements were never filed is if you did not build 35,000 square foot of commercial retail space, if you built 34,000 square foot, the road would go away, and there would be no need for the easement.
Well, that, that's, that's a, that's a quite true.
Well, that's what that would use to...
The reality is, those parcels should have been, as Derek said, they should have been noted out in there, that easement is there, even if nothing was built on these parcels. They should have showed the easements on the parcels, you know, to show that one day it will happen. So when we did reach it, whichever area, you know, reached 35,000, the road was to go in.
Right, but if you were under 35,000 square foot, there was no...
What you want to like doing by not filing the easements is you create a situation like we have right now. Where you have parcels that are owned by different people. That because those easements do not exist on the parcels, there isn't an easy way to go back and put that easement on it. It should have been put on those parcels when it was subdivided out. That was, that's the ultimate error that was made, that those easements were not filed, as if they should have been filed. And somebody, frankly, there's someone that made the direction to not file the easements. You were told by somebody, someone made that decision. And then you'll never find out who that was. It's too long ago, and I don't find that at all. But the reality is, now we have a situation where the easements were supposed to exist on neighboring parcels that were given this ability to have the road constructed, since they were not filed. The fact that it was being triggered, you can't go, it's taken somebody's deed to, oh, by the way, the neighboring property, you want to reach to this threshold, this easement matches with appears on your parcel. That easement had to have been filed when that parcel was sold, and it was. And so that thing, from, from easement to easement, it wasn't done in this case to meet our requirements for the overall subdivision.
How many parcels are there between there and where it connects to the other side? Like three?
I believe there's, you know, along Ridge Road, there's...
Well, go back the pathway, you know, like the original...
I think there's two parcels.
Two parcels?
Yeah, because there's a large parcel, and then there's not...
Who owns those parcels now?
I don't know. It's, uh, 962 Ridge Road LLC. That's the now...
962, so who's 962? Is that part of Morgan, Prista, who owns it?
No, no.
It's not, not part of, are you guys? Who would buy a piece of land back there? Is my next question, which is basically almost sure it'd be a landmark. I mean, it's in a sense, it's just a field in the back. How's that going to get developed in the future? I don't have that, that bad of a thought, but, you know what I'm saying?
Well, it has access, it has access out to Shoe Craft, correct? That parcel has access to Shoe Craft.
Right, because part of the overall development.
Because that was it.
No, it borders Shoe Craft.
Right, where Wendy's is and that whole thing, where Wendy's putting this...
That was it.
It was supposed to be connecting ultimately over to this.
Right.
It was the overall plan. So how do they get access to that parcel?
All the parcels have, have right-of-way access. All parcels do, in this situation.
I don't have the drawing, but overall, you know, you see what I'm saying? There are two pieces in the back over there, two pieces that don't really front a Ridge Road.
This piece over here, that is a very large piece...
To the east of you, or...
It'd be to the west of us.
To the west, okay.
Goes all the way, all the way out to Shoe Craft. The parcel is large enough that it borders Shoe Craft. It also borders Ocky Site and Wendy's, everywhere to the north. In this direction, this parcel has access from Harmony Station, the back parcel here. And then the remaining parcels this way all already are right, so they already have access as well.
So we don't even know who owns those parcels. Would they be willing to have a road go through, which would benefit any development on their properties too, in the future? See, we don't know who owns it, but that they, can't believe we don't know who owns it.
I don't know the specific person's name that owns that mall, I can tell you is that it's...
I'd be curious to say, who the hell would go buy a piece of land in the middle of the field?
Well, they all have, they all have access. If you're asking, nobody is landmarked.
I don't have the drawing. Well, anyways, okay, so, so the piece going to the west of you...
It's not our property.
It's not yours, no. But it goes over and connects to...
Shoe Craft.
To Shoe Craft, to that parcel. That road could eventually connect. Shoe Craft, the one that comes in and back Wendy's and so on, so on. That could connect to this piece next to you.
Yes. It borders it, yes. It borders that parcel.
So then it's a matter of getting an easement across that piece of property to make a reality of this whole thing. Is that my right here?
And going through a federal wetland.
Well, the wetland, we kind of went through that because the ponds were there.
We cannot go through the wetland, federal wetland, or roadway, which is where the easements were originally shown. That was kind of, that was one of the initial conversations we had with this board, was, you know, not only, you know, do we feel traffic-wise, we're under the threshold that we discussed, but also the roadway goes right through a federal wetland. If it's not on our property, I...
Eric, as far as I can see, with this whole thing, for us, is one of two things. Either one, we push it all aside, move forward with the project as it's been proposed, as it has been proposed tonight, is showing what they're here for tonight. Or the other thing is to try and see if it could be an easement gotten across these properties and so on and so forth. So what's the benefit of moving forward with it tonight? The benefit of that, in my opinion, would be it's a low, low impact on the area, minimal traffic, it's not like a shopping center, this was the intent of the roadway in the first place for us, to be able to service all that. If the parcel that's to the west comes in in the future, it would have to be required that they connect to that roadway going over Shoe Craft. And that's the only way we can get around this. This still exists on the Ridge Road, the way you're presenting it, and the other parcel would have to connect over to Shoe Craft. That's the only way it would be used on. Am I right or wrong? Right?
Yes, thank you, George. The other... Correct. The other thing is that the rear of our proposed development, we have an easement with the Harmony Community in the back, as well as with who used to be Conifer, their building senior housing. So by having that easement, we can have a rear access to our site. So we have two accesses to our storage facility. One, Harmony Station around it in the back, through an easement we have to this property, that was, that was, I guess, good planning. And secondly, is the Ridge Road curb cut. The other thing I'd like to add is that through working things out with roosters, which we've had multiple discussions with and emails, we're not going to be asking the board in the future for approval for a curb cut for that 1.25 acre parcel on Ridge Road next to ESL that's currently available for development. We've worked out with roosters that we're just going to use their current curb cut. So they maintain their curb cut, they have access around the back of the property, back out to the new curb cut that we're putting in, we have easements. So again, today, for what Matt and I can deal with, if we weren't here in 15, we're trying to make plan best for everybody, including the town. So we're not going to be coming in asking for another curb cut for that vacant parcel. The rooster's curb cut will service that parcel. That's, I think that's a benefit to the town also, in terms of Ridge Road. The, the reality is that the Conifer Senior Housing Development uses Harmony Station behind ESL and up and around. The Webster Green Apartments go to the light at Harmony Station, go up and around, and go to their 85 and 90 apartments. That's been going on for ten years. Roosters has its own curb cut, and will have, we're asking for a curb cut for our storage facility. Dr. T. and Greco, the gentleman that bought the parcel to the class, we have no impact on that, we don't own it, nor do we own the funeral home or anything else, so we're just trying to plan a nice project around what we have control of. And the flow of traffic, we completely accommodate right now through Harmony Station to the back, the Conifer and the apartments, and through the new curb cut to the storage facility, of which roosters also gets the benefit of that, but so does Mr. Jane Greco. He gets the benefit. So the new curb cut will benefit the storage facility, it'll benefit roosters, and it'll benefit Mr. Jane Greco, to the extent he ever develops it. So I don't want to speak for him, nor should I, but you've now got potential for a new curb cut on Ridge Road that really services three projects, and in theory could service the one to the west, Mr. Jane Greco, if the board so chooses to make a decision on what they want to do with curb cuts in the future.
So that piece that's to the west of you is Jane Greco's?
Correct.
That could connect to your curb cut?
Oh, it is. It's, our road goes right...
Well, it's right there.
It borders it.
But does, would they have right to use it?
Absolutely. We're going to give the, him the easement, we're giving roosters an easement.
So these would be given to the property to the west, you...
Oh, absolutely. Totally, totally.
Uh, Mr. Kishani, we've opened up the easement, it's a general, basically access easement. So if Jane Greco comes in for development, and he has the ability, or puts an easement over his access, the funeral home could also access through that. So the easement is, is open for access to neighboring properties, it's not restricted to just these two properties as well. It's open for, if, if the funeral home ever has the ability to tie into it, they can as well. But that makes sense.
Eric, based on what I can see out of this, it's a compromise, and what they're showing, and if this is used for food and parcels there, to utilize that same curb cut, what more can we get out of it? We can tangle it and go dig it into plans and drawings and minutes, and what are we going to find, we don't even know. We had this project in, it's a decent project, again, I think the original savior for it was the fact that it's a low, low-volume operation, very low volume operation, track class. So, you guys talk... So, you guys talked, you wanted to, Dave?
Use when you were just talking about, was that, did they use when you were just talking about, where, where is that actually showing?
So it's, it's a proposed access easement to the town of Webster. And to brace yourself, 1035 Ridge Road, 1029 Ridge Road, 1031 Ridge Road, and 1041 Ridge Road.
That's for utilizing?
Utilizing that. So that gives the ability for this parcel, this parcel, this parcel for that parcel to tie into it.
Then we gotta take them into forms of it?
Well, we, we will have to file, we'll have to file the easement as part of the approval. So we will come up with easement maps and legal descriptions that we'll provide.
All right, so if we move forward then with the preliminary, do we need then to show before final approval, show these easements onto this property or what?
They're already there. They're, they're already proposed on the map. We, we need, we need the final approval to be able to file it. But we also have need to final signatures from the town on my lot before we can pull ability for that. So what typically happens is the easements get filed before we get final signatures from the town to pull ability for that. So it's, it's a proposed easement until we get final approval.
The thing that makes you kind of worried about that is that we got a drawing that had those easements all over there. This one says...
Well, it's in the conditions. It'll be in the conditions.
It's in the conditions.
It wasn't, it wasn't filed before.
Well, yeah, we, we require proof of easement filed and now prior to any reconstruction meetings or permits. That's our policy. So if you're worried about that, don't.
You got that, you got that.
When this project came in originally in 2010, it was type one, right?
I, I have no idea. I wasn't here.
A lot of acreage involved here? Water? Yes, it's got, I, I bet my Indian ancestors were in it.
Yeah.
But that's the case, now you're coming in with a different project. With segmented parcels. We, we should do Seeker all over again.
We did Seeker as part of the use variance.
And re-present it as an unlisted action.
Correct.
Redo that to cover our bases here. Because I'm looking at 228 dash eight, and I'm not conceding anything on behalf of the town, absolutely nothing. Okay, I want you to know that.
Sure.
But it does say that without conceding anything on behalf of my client, that if more than six months have elapsed since the time of the planning board's action on the preliminary site plan, or if the planning board finds that conditions may have changed significantly in the interim, the planning board may require a resubmission of the preliminary site plan, an additional public hearing for further review, and possible revision prior to accepting the proposed final site plan or review.
Well, we don't, we never, we never received preliminary approval. We haven't received preliminary.
Right, that's what I'm saying, we can start fresh, do an unlisted seeker review.
Maybe you do.
But you have to be considerate that things have significantly changed, which it's true that it has.
It has not significantly changed in the past.
It's still the same feel.
It's the same exact project.
But the, the, the intent for what you propose in it is less impacted than what was originally thought to happen anyways.
Correct.
But that's assuming, I agree with you on that, there are no final minutes for the original project.
But that, that seeker determination that you're referring to was several years ago, not six months ago.
It's been more than six months, that's my point.
Well, we redid it. We redid it as, as far as the use variance, because we did...
We didn't get that.
You didn't?
Well, they, they did, they, they... Right, they resubmit, that's what I'm saying, for our, for our...
Resubmit, for what? So do Seeker again?
Yes.
I don't know why we would do that.
Why would we do that?
I don't think we can do that.
Why, why couldn't you do that?
Because we've already done Seeker. We did Seeker as part of the use variance.
The planning board, the new project.
That, that for, but our, we don't...
Well, we, well, we can, we can make our determination here as an unlisted action.
You have that?
No, I, I, I'm glad with it. What, what are we gonna do? There's nothing gonna change.
That's what you want.
Yeah, I think that, that would be adequate.
Then still do it.
Yeah, yeah, well, might be a good idea to put it just for the record that we did do it.
But that's assuming that there was no final approval on the original project, right? There's no minute, there's nothing.
No, we're basing it on what, if we get everything that's happened in the past, we're dealing with what we've got in front of us right now. That's just, that parcel alone is a proposal for preliminary approval. So Seeker would be on what they are proposing.
Right, right, well, then I get that.
Okay?
I'm okay with that.
All right, okay. All right, um, all right, again, this was a tabled hearing. If there's anyone wishing to speak to that more, against this project, anybody?
When this whole project was split up, was the Brewsters curb cut always supposed to be that?
I believe so, yeah.
No, but Brewsters...
Brewsters was supposed to disappear when this excess road came in.
Yeah.
When you read the conditions for the preliminary approval in 2015, Brewster Drive was supposed to go away. New Drive was supposed to be constructed.
Right, but then the, the one, so part of how we're mitigating that is if we, we were to eliminate Brewsters curb cut, then the 1.25 acre parcel needs a curb cut. So what we're trying to do to mitigate that is do a shared access between the two of them. And there's also a proposed easement, which you can build into, which you guys will have, a, a map and legal description of, that, that provides access for both those parcels.
There's a lot of R1C.
Correct. Right. This... Yes, correct. That's Brewsters.
That would have required a more substantial exit.
Brewsters is R1B.
R... So R1C is, is the one to the left, to the east of that?
No.
Yes, it's R, well, Brewsters is... Doesn't, R1BA, and the one to the right of that is R1C2.
So here's, here's an art problem though. Is that this map that was filed is not the same map that you're showing down here?
It is, because what happened...
The parcel numbers are going to be different?
They, they are different because the front parcel was subdivided out since.
Even this property one is different?
They are different, because that, that parcel was, has been since subdivided out at one parcel, which is why it's R1C2. This parcel up here, Mr. Anderson, was subdivided out. This whole parcel here was R1C. This was subdivided out. This is R1C1, and this is R1C2 now.
When was that? That can fall.
Yes.
It was part of the administrative group?
Yeah.
Correct.
Somehow you got the town to an administrative subdivision, so the development was part of an overall development. That doesn't help.
I think it calls for administrative subdivisions involving...
Yeah, but this was part of an overall multiple subdivision. For the town to take an action on its own, administrative group, to piece out one part of an overall development is not consistent with the original plan for the site.
So that wasn't done, done to...
Wasn't done correctly.
Stiff-arm the town. It was done because this parcel is a lot more marketable from, from a, for sale standpoint when it was subdivided out and not part of this, because it almost acts as an appendage.
But my point is that this, this whole development at this point has a significant number of administrative problems associated with it. That this parcel should have never been subdivided out administratively. It is part of the overall development. It's the only way to keep track of the overall development from the original. And by taking those pieces out, without going back to the naming boards, it would have, and now it's supposed to, the staff has changed, but this, this should have never been subdivided out. That's got our control. I mean, we just went through a process that was, that was developed to us. I mean, we, we spent, we spent many, many years trying to get use of that development, with most of this being landlocked in the map as you can see, with very little access. We had to make a very strong case to the zoning board for why we shouldn't be granted a use variance in and of itself. And one of the actions that made sense to them was that by subdividing that parcel in, in fall, per judge, at least we now had a commercial site that was marketable, as opposed to five acres in the back that you could only get at with a 50-foot curb cut. Nobody wanted it, so we were, we were granted variance. That created a positive, in my view, for the town, which is now, is a very substantial piece of real estate there that the town might benefit from in future development.
What did the zoning board?
Pardon?
What did the zoning board issue it's?
variance?
It was, it was just short.
Yeah.
Oh, you're saying they had six months, five months ago?
But yeah, less, yes, within a year.
Yeah, it was definitely less than six months.
2021?
Well, 20, I think you got it.
Was that the September 21st? I mean, this original plan, this concept I got here, it's dated September 21st, 2015.
That, that was when we completed it. What, I mean, when we made application was probably November, October, November. So, um, and I don't believe we got approval until December probably, and it's been less than six months.
Well, you know what, we can, we can go on online, I think we can say. Um, we're, we're gonna be, end up making, making a combination of apples and oranges. I think we need to stick to what we've got right now, deal with this, it's been subdivided, whether we like it or we don't like it. There's a proposed lot, R1A, uh, R1B in the front, those are salable parcels, they're large enough, they're not substandard. They're large enough for a development, we have to deal with what we have. This, I agree with what you're saying there, Matt, it's in the back, a separate piece, wasn't a very highly usable piece, because it's just part of the overall. Be nice if the front was developed, just the orange, whatever it may be. This is one unit sitting in the back of that property on its own. And the reason we went along with it was again, about mobile and the traffic. I think we just have to work with what we have in front of us here and move on with this stuff.
All right, so before we go...
This is tough.
Before we go forward.
Go ahead.
The planning board does not want me to look into the legal significance of the final subdivision map with the clerks, which receives preliminary but not final approval. You're asking...
We, we don't know if that's a fact, we, we just don't have a record of that. I mean, could it be somewhere in the archives?
But here's, you don't want me to look into that.
I don't think we have to bother. I think we, we should just move forward with what's presented here right now.
I just noticed something in the minutes from the April 21st, 2015 meeting. Um, that the planning board did make a motion for the final subdivision approval, not the site plan. So it is right here.
Okay.
Is it fine?
Yes, they did grant final subdivision approval on April 21st, 2015.
Okay, so there's no...
There was record to it then?
Yes.
That's what we found. All right, um, anybody have questions concerning what you want to do with this? Dave?
Well, you know, a lot of those parcels were approved with the, it was a memo, memo of understanding about very low.
Yeah, I think that's right to mention there, right? As far as that memorandum of understanding, I think that's something we have to, we have to just, just abolish that, you know? Just take that right off.
But it never filed.
Right, so I think we have to just, just continue to use it.
But that's what I'm thinking about there.
So like, different, different parcels that were approved, like for instance Wendy's, that was approved with that road on the map. Right?
Yeah.
So how does that, uh, fit in? Does that make another void?
They had recourse, so saying, hey, you're not gonna build this road you said you're gonna build?
Does, does the Wendy's, does the Wendy's property...
Yeah, yeah.
Because the road on there started, I guess, in the...
That, that wouldn't have, that wouldn't have been approved with our, our particular site in mind, because it's, it's two different projects, two different properties.
There, there actually was. How can they approve something they can't control?
Yeah, there's no way you could approve something on somebody else's property.
Because it's overall development, it's designed in the first.
I, I don't know how you, how, how Wendy's was able to get their approval for their parcel and, and force an approval for a roadway and another road, or another parcel that they don't own?
This project has always had the access program.
Yeah, but there's no approval that's tied...
This, this project predated the Wendy's.
Right, but we're not, we're talking about...
Wendy's came in, this was the overall plan for putting in the access program. And so they did their part of building their section, knowing there was the overall intent of this project. And at the time, this overall development brought it up to the property, which wouldn't be a prospect to be true.
I have an assessment from that, from that meeting, and it shows it going right into the project. On both site map and Wendy's?
Well, that was the original...
Yeah, that was the original one.
Yeah. So that, so that's the problem, that since the word proposed is what I'm implying, and as the project is, the site has been subdivided and sold off, easements never filed. It has created a situation where well-resolved, promised, and said we're gonna do it, and they did. So now we have a gap between the two projects, because the bridge and subdivision is done. The people that's, that filed the subdivision, they've filed the easements.
I think, I think you're right. I, I think it's just something that we can't, we can't change though.
But it's not what we do by now.
No.
We, yeah, we, probably, that predated us. We're just trying to work with a project we have.
As far as the road, as far as the road that's actually in back of Wendy's over there, that does benefit that parcel, because the road is all the way to the south, so they have all the, they got all the, you know, that whole parcel is all accessible to that road. So it isn't like it's a, like a dead-end wasting a piece of property. So that benefits, we, I don't even want to get into that.
It's too bad the access road wasn't...
Was that?
It's too bad, uh, the goal was only to really have one road cut or curb cut there. So it's too bad that the curb cut kind of been on the Brewsters side and that incorporated, because that would have got all your properties.
It gave access to the, the Dallas direct road. There's a parcel where the Dallas was doing the one. And they, they show it on the new plan, it's good to have access to the drive, although it's a temporary, temporary. And the idea to do away, and I think the reason to do away with the Brewster Drive was something to deal with. Tell them, um, for the closeness of access program, curb cuts along the road. So that was something, you know, suggested by the owner of the town to get rid of that curb cut. Because if you go back and you look at this plan that was, that was filed, you know, the parking for Brewsters is really on going down the entire east side of this development, we have harmless now. It has modular, it was those, those parking and access easement. The east side of the property, none of that's gonna happen. They do have different green challenge for creating the own parking in that, in access, maybe in the back of the lot, use a certain drive, it's hopefully still. From that perspective, it is following that, kind of the idea there. It's the exception with their keeping the drive lane, Brewster.
Okay, where are we going? I think we gotta just get back on to the focus of what we have right here. Actually, just to play it, say, maybe we should have another seeker, just to determine if it'd be an unlisted action. So, um... Pretty much what the zoning board did anyway, just, just reiterate it, just so that's on...
So it develops, you know, it's a kind of a little problem.
Is that?
Their approv, their approval was for...
The use variance?
A use variance. And wasn't necessarily for the overall project and stuff, it was for a specific...
Yeah, okay. That's why, that's what disagrees with the DPF agreement.
Well, you can just do it, you can do it.
You can do it, and I'm saying you should have, because their record is my record, my record is my record. So I can have, my record should be complete.
Can we take care of that? Can we take care of that?
Yeah, so can I, how would we care of that is a different question. I'm just saying my record is not, the function of the town board's record is, or your CBA's record, I don't know what they do, and I'm not defending that board, my record should be CBA, that's all I'm saying.
So you, you can just act on, on their death, right?
Their death with the board too.
Yeah.
Yeah, fair, okay.
Okay, this was a public hearing, we opened it, and no one, we got no calls, no permission to state, well, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back for any discussion here, John, Dave, everybody. Just move with what we got.
Yeah.
Just narrow it on, right, yeah, just, you know, the what we got. Um, Jerry, go ahead, you want to open up? Have you got something there, or just, just what we got?
Chair? So the project itself, we're all at the development, this is all outside federal level areas.
Correct.
And as part of it, you do have the bio retention areas, how are, this does kind of follow back to some of the original approvals, I'm starting with, there is a stormwater detention farm. What's the reason behind the bio detention area?
So the stormwater management area is sized to handle development, which we, we've already, we addressed in some PRC comments. However, we still need to meet the New York State PNC guidelines for free infrastructure, because they're newer guidelines, so that's the intent of the bio retention area, is to cover that.
So that's covering new regulations that have come up since.
Correct, that have come up since.
But, and that's, is the bio retention area handling the portion of full, also?
A portion of it.
Was it ultimately discharged to the project or something?
Correct, yes.
So that's your water quality.
Correct.
Traffic aspect, this is something that we, we're discussing, clearly lower traffic impact. And, with the gates are so far under, they've gated off. And we've talked about access to the back, the access to the back is really just limited to the people who utilize the storage facility.
Correct.
It's not the intent, in terms of, it's not the intent to leave the gates open, so the people that are visiting the businesses up front could go out the back way, because we do a left turn, but, you know, we block them. Lighting on the building, this whole site with?
Yeah, we provided, yeah, we provided a touch sheet, we also have a set.
Is that lighting that's always, I see, I see the lighting, is that always, always on, or is it just? We're gonna have motion sensors on the outside roads, so if you drive down one, if you drive down one road, it'll light up that road through the building, but if you're not in board the property, the other roads will not light, but there's security lighting on all the time. So it'll be securely lit, but it won't be led up, you know, twenty-four seven, but lights don't need to be on. And they're all wall packs, you know, light, bad lights. So following a lot of kind of the visibility of the development and stuff, you know, it's a three-story building surrounded by, or single-story buildings. On the backside, you do have the apartment complex, with a couple of them that do look directly towards this development. I see white poles, we were looking at the S five, that's I'm designing, C one oh six. Are they white poles, they're not trees, but they are white poles?
Correct.
Those whites are always gonna be on two or three.
Those are gonna be the ones in the back, but they're gonna be on the motion sensors, right?
Yeah. And so, any kind of visual barrier between the residential area and the backside of this development, existing trees, or is it closing anything else along the backside?
We're not, and part of the reason, I believe when we met with Joe Hurst, he talked about just some utilities back there, the concern was invading utilities with roots, so, so we didn't show anything significant back there. So we're trying to utilize these existing trees that are there now.
That does look like you are putting some drainage structures back there too?
Yeah, that's just to, currently the drainage goes right through the center of the site, it's just to reroute it along the outside of the site.
And the drainage even in the site, you're proposing to abandon that, or?
Well, we locate, abandon the existing easement and provide the easement for drainage.
It says remove existing catch bases, storm lines, and neutral tree easements. How is that just stepping through, they can see that, just stepping through, that's gonna be the work there?
So, so it'll be on the south sides, currently, the stormwater line goes just like this, connects up with this pond. Now it will go around the developments, or it doesn't go underneath the developments?
It does add a foot space for.
Correct.
Smoke and fire, for bringing on, but it does have this twelve-inch storm line coming from our side, we are according to twelve-inch HCPD, which is technically smaller than So just kind of reiterate too, it sounds like some feedback that, that we've received for trees and visual barrier on the back, not desirous because of the possible conflicts with utilities and, is that something that we're to be comfortable, realizing once this is done, this whole site area is gonna be graded down to a swell that goes to catch basin, you know, have white poles on it, so effectively the existing apartments that are back there, go ahead of four trees, currently on the side, going through two four trees. Space quite wide between the back here and the old visual barrier, between the apartments and the backside of the building. Keep in mind too, that the backside of the building is corrugated and skewed.
Yeah, it's just, yeah.
So that's something we're comfortable with.
Well, you got, you got the drainage coming around the backside.
There's also water, water made through there as well.
What's it, what's it showing on landscape, right?
That's what I was just saying, on the landscape plan, I believe it was C one oh six, in landscape and lighting plan. It doesn't show any new trees on there. Is the exception two on either side of the driveway? Is that, you got two going from either side of the driveway?
Yes.
And then there's four other existing trees on the back.
So what are you suggesting, increase the?
I'm just pointing it out for the discussion, I'm just pointing it out for the discussion. This, the backside is gonna be quite visible through the apartment complex, like it is now, and below thirty feet through the apartment.
Yeah, um, see, that, that, the water basin area, the drainage or swell area, covers quite a bit of that, is there any room to? It'd have to be somewhere between the low property elevation, four, four fifty, the top of it, looks like, somewhere between there and the road, is all you've got, right? General script there? Correct?
There's a water, a water made through there too, so it goes water, storm, and basically the edge of our, our pavement.
So I guess then the question is, are any, can you put in more landscaping there? Usually a place you want to increase in landscape.
Yeah, if we can, we certainly will, but again, the initial PR scheme we had with the high risk intended, he didn't, he was concerned about the utilities with the trees, and that's why we don't show them.
It's showing trees, actually showing trees, look like they're right in there.
They're existing.
Okay, so will they stay there, or will they be?
We weren't telling you about.
In front of the burn, or behind the burn, that's existing there?
Well, okay, so where those trees, those five trees there, where those five trees are, is actually at the lowest depth of that contention area, so that won't work, won't work.
They're existing.
I know, but that's what I'm saying, they don't, they won't even make it.
They're, they're doing fine now.
Is that swell there now, I guess?
It is there now.
It is there now?
Yes.
Okay, so that's not gonna change.
Correct.
If, if, we would, if the boards would like for us to work with, what was the gentleman thinking, BBW, or, or, how was words?
Joe Hurst.
If Joe's comfortable with us.
Well, he's the, the nigga.
If the gentleman that works for you that said we should stay on that area, wants to meet us on site, and he's comfortable with us putting trees in specific areas, we would gladly do that. I mean, we've got ninety apartments behind us, it might be customers, so, and none of them are here complaining, nor is the owner, but we're not looking at that to be a neighbor, so if, if the town approves of the location of some spruce trees or something that we can put in, we will gladly do that, but I don't wanna make a.
Point it out before discussion.
Yeah, but I don't wanna make a decision, the board, the town has already said you might wanna avoid that area, but we're happy to work with the board if it's a condition of your approval, or with the, uh, public board's sake of something. Well, you mentioned, is there a way, just not really seeing enough, for continuous foot traffic from this residential area up to the Brewsters? Because right now, I've seen fences doing right, those are the property lines, and if people cut across there now, you know, it doesn't have the old driving, you know, that one's going to be, and just kind of walk across.
I drove.
Are we creating? Yeah, people have to, yeah, you look at the area, the photographs, the flames are loaded, it's, he has a name. Our, our intention is maybe a secure facility.
It's a secure facility, wouldn't want a few of them.
Really? Now, from a liability standpoint, and Mary from Brewsters also made a good point, that the pawn to the west, with children and whatnot, that might frequent her business, we don't wanna encourage people to wander around the property.
Correct.
So, we told Mary, we're gonna have a secure facility with fencing, as you can see from the middle, and that just probably makes sense, and there's a lot of places where people can lost in there.
Sure.
We don't wanna encourage any of that.
Part of the reason I asked, only, is this, when initially came back in, and we was married, and I should, is when they purchased the property, they had the understanding that this can be a different type of development, and there's a concern that it can be an impact of the business itself. Right now, it sounds like though that with a secure facility, and possibly the people coming through from back there, you're okay with that, don't wanna put you on the spot in areas, case anything bad.
We don't get a lot of foot traffic coming through, we just get people out to walks.
So you don't, right now, it sounds like there isn't, we just observed a lot of foot traffic coming from there, so there wouldn't really be any kind of justification for a walkway or a trail.
Somebody, somebody does mow it, somebody does mow the path from the apartment complex, but I don't know who that is.
What else do we?
Probably answers just everywhere. What was the fence again?
Um, it's a picket fence, sorry, copy of the question.
That's right, okay, so that's a wire fence.
No, no.
Or metal?
Yeah. All right. Repeat this one. We closed the public hearing, so you wanna do a secret round this call?
Town of Webster Planning Board Consider Request By, let me try again, LS Webster Ridge Road LLC. To construct a self-storage facility consisting of eight one-story buildings and one three-story building, five one nine three acres, like, and the SPO number zero seven nine point zero one, or point zero eight, dash one, dash one four, located in the one zero four one, three zero. The planning board determines the proposed action as the longest action based on the pound. The action includes approximately eighty-four thousand square feet of buildings, which exceeds the four thousand square foot threshold for a type two action defined in section six seventeen point seven, six seventeen point five, C nine, for non-residential structures. The planning board determined that the action is subject to a single agency review pursuant to part six seventeen point six, the four of seeker, and it is most appropriate to see for making the determination of significance. The planning, the planning board therefore designates itself lead agency for the proposed action. The planning board has given considerations the criteria for determining significance is set forth in section six seventeen point seven, C one, seeker, and has one, considered the information obtained in the short amount assessment form dated February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and the two, considered public canvas directed to the planning board during the concept of reviewing, uh, October thirteenth, twenty, and the three, considered public canvas directed to the planning board at the public hearing on April fourth, and May fourth, two thousand twenty-one, and the four, completed part two of the long amount assessment form. Now therefore be a resolved with the Town of Webster Planning Board hereby determines that the proposed action will not have a significant adverse effect on the department for the reasons set forth in the attached notes of determination of significance. Being further resolved with the Town of Webster Planning Board is authorized to take all actions reasonable and necessary, the final negative declaration, and discharge the Town of Webster Planning Board's responsibility, lead agency, for this action. Being further resolved with the Town of Webster Planning Board, based on the information and analysis above, the reference supporting documentation, the discussions of the actions by the Town of Webster Planning Board, is documented on the meeting, on the men's business meeting, that the proposed action will not resolve any significant amount of impacts. Being further resolved with the Town of Webster Planning Board therefore makes the determination of non-significance. Being further resolved with the Town of Webster Planning Board, based on the above reasons, issues a negative declaration of nothing quite as pertinent. One second.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Rena?
Aye.
Mr. Darbina?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Colesel?
Aye.
Mr. Malta?
Aye.
Mr. Bishan?
Aye.
All right, preliminary approval for the project. I'll make a motion to the county, a preliminary approval to the Webster Golf Teas self-storage facility, Ridge Road, subject to drawing, it's got a project number, you can take and put that out in your record, okay, the reason, considering the numbers, but it's C one oh one to C one oh six, and then C two hundred, and then C two zero one. And we'll make that subject. PRC comments, subject to a letter credit posted in the Town of Webster, with the Town of Webster, subject to any conservation warrant comments, subject to mono county water authority comments, subject to determination of a ZBA for requested variances, we're receiving. Address any land we convey to the town, it is not, right? Nothing to be concerned over to the town?
No.
Okay, so we move back and off, six is off. Address any recent subdivision approvals, which takes a land, but I don't wanna get into that one. All the improvements shall be constructed according to the specifications of the Town of Webster, roadway construction in accordance with specifications set forth by the Town of Webster, all site work is to be in compliance with the standards of the Town of Webster, deserving the few trees that you had, you're doing that where possible, comply with all requirements of federal, state, county, and town agencies, address the drainage, lighting, signage, landscape, buffering, buring, and snow storage, you've done that, thirteen. Landscape, hardscape, site accessories, and associated finish. Landscape, hardscape, site accessories, and associated finished, finished grading design for the development must be prepared by license, we've done that, uh, New York State license, uh, landscape, and after, let's see, approvals are subject to the drawing over we just used. And, uh, on that, so, just wanna clarify, if you guys, if it's in those, uh, curb cut, eventually, it connects over, it's, uh, the property of the east of Brewsters, that would be going, that would be connecting into that parcel over there.
Correct, Brewster's.
Right, okay, yeah. Scribbled down, scribbled down, west access, oh, the western access would be going over, uh, west, going over to the west, there's connection for them to go onto your parcel, but.
Correct, you have one.
So there'd be an easement to the western properties for the proposed curb cut for the storage facility, okay? And, uh, okay, that's what I had for notes, sir, anything else?
Yeah, the high risk intended, it's gonna go out there.
What's that?
Out to block the trees and back to see what.
Oh, investigate, investigate, uh, landscape, uh, that, additional landscaping to the south, south property? Okay, all right. Anything else? Now it's covered, okay, that'd be a motion then.
I'll second.
Mr. Fishon?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Mr. Martha?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Coastal?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Jarvina?
Aye.
All right, for final approval, again, we'll link this up with the P R C comments. Parks and Rec trees, I don't think that pays in the parks that there is, does it? Just residential, right, okay, so we'll, 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 yeah, subject to preliminary approval conditions, uh, subject to all applicable governmental fees, subject to the, uh, Department of Public Works approvals. And significant construction shall occur within one year, as deemed by the planning board, to expire on, this is May fourth, two thousand twenty-two, right? Um, this is gonna be important, the conditions of the preliminary file, what the approvals are, um, should be on the cover sheet of the final approved drugs. And the engineer, and this is also important, because now there's gonna be a new building inspector coming on, and I wanna make sure we cover this right from the, right from the ground up. And that being, the engineer for the proposed project provides a letter of certification that all proposed work was completed as per the planning board resolution, a final approval, before a C L O is issued. And that's gonna, in my opinion, should be very important, if this stuff is done, because things get by, we're playing catch-up later on, you know what I mean? Trying to get these things to us. Let's see, the engineer, I'm starting to have a hard credit. Okay, uh, the letter of credit to the town for the project, shall include the fee for the engineer's final certification inspection of the site. All stormwater facilities are to be constructed first, and, excuse me, downspouts, you're not putting downspouts on there?
No, no, it'd be, I'm correct, yeah.
Okay, I'll let you put that up, sir. And make that subject to the, uh, resolution, the final approval minutes, and, uh, again, approvals are, haven't seen them. And I guess that would be it for final approval.
I'll second.
Mr. Fishon?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Mr. Martha?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Coastal?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Jarvina?
Aye.